Okay, I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors for the Town of Sebastopol for Monday, December 16th at 7:00 PM. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, we'll call the roll, please.
Supervisor Weidman.
Here.
Supervisor Teis.
Here.
Vice Chairman Wolfholt.
Here.
And Supervisor Stavenas.
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum, and we have public participation is next. We have two citizens in attendance. Anything you'd like to discuss this evening, or raise, or bring to our attention?
Everything's on the agenda.
Sounds good by me. Carrie, same thing?
Yes.
All right, in which case we'll move on. The agenda, has it been properly noticed?
It has.
And then, understanding that the agenda as is, I would take a motion to adopt.
Move they adopt the agenda as printed?
Second.
Motion by Chuck, second by Dick, to all in favor of accepting the agenda as is, signify by saying yes. Yes, or aye.
Aye.
Your choice, thank you. Carrie, approval of minutes, Board of Supervisors meeting November 18th. Any comments, questions, or changes?
I have a motion to approve the minutes for November 18th, 2013.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Chuck, approve the minutes for November 18th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
You're applying here, boss.
We're going to make a lot of people happy today. Financial reports, November 2013, you have them in your packet, actual fund balances and transactions. Any questions or comments?
Move they way accept and place on file.
Second.
All right, motion by Chuck, second by John, all in favor of accepting the financial reports, et cetera, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No motion carries. Oral committee reports and committee minutes. In your packet, you have committee and other commission minutes, you have the planned commission from November 14th, the cable committee meeting from October 28th, the tourism zone from November 22nd. Anybody have any comments, or anybody want to talk, or have an oral committee report they would like to give?
On the tourism zone, if this bill AB 385 passes, or when it passes, it looks like it's going to make it, there's a 3% rebate to the lodging owner or tax collector, right, that would reimburse them for their use of credit cards and accepting the taxes and paying the taxes, the credit card fees. For the Town of Sebastopol, that would amount to approximately $2,243 a year based on last year's tax income, that we would wind up losing because of that rebate that comes out of our share. Well, it comes out of everybody's share, the...
Lose 30%.
Out of our 30%, though, we would lose about $2,250.
And I didn't listen to Gary Vies completely this morning on W D O R, but I wondered if he talked about that. I did hear him talk about some other bills that were pending, so I don't know if that came up, so, but it does sound like it's going to go. Any?
We canceled our meeting for the 11th of December because we didn't have the stuff back from the town yet, and we just got it tonight, so our meeting will be the January 6th or 7th of January, so that we can look, get stuff over, and see how to proceed.
Great.
Interesting.
This, I'll hold on that for a minute. Okay.
We haven't set a date, we haven't set a date yet for that.
It looks, it looks like January 9th may be the best date for the majority.
This is on the 20 acre, all the results of the...
The rezoning classes, yes.
Small estate and everything.
Higher densities, yeah, around villages.
Okay. Any other comments?
Could I ask a question on the tourism zone?
Sure.
Okay, the 3% will reimburse credit card holders, what about those lodging providers that still have to complete the form but do not accept credit cards? I mean, that was...
That really hasn't been discussed, but it looks like everybody will be able to take the 3% right off of the top of the taxes they owe. It works similar to the way Wisconsin sales tax is paid.
Mm-hmm.
You get a $10 or a certain percentage of the tax, provided you filed on time and paid the tax.
Well, it's a maximum $10 that you get for filing on time.
In this case, it'll be a 3% of the tax, not 3% of the lodging bill, it's 3% of the tax charged.
Okay, so then each lodging owner will be attributed to whatever tax they collected for that month, what amounts were placed on the credit cards for room tax, and then receive their rebate accordingly?
The way I understand it, it'll be whatever their total tax bill is, they will get the 3%, whether you do it, whether their customer used a credit card or not.
Monthly or on a year-end basis?
No, this will be on a monthly report.
So they'd actually turn in the report and deduct it?
They will collect the tax, at the end of the period, they fill out the report, and tally up the tax owed, take their 3% and pay the balance.
Sounds simple. Okay, any other comments? All right, hearing none, we will then take these minutes and put them on file. Next, you have in your packets, the license and permits. You can see there's been a little bit of activity from independent, or our community. All right.
Good construction.
Sounds fine by me.
Fine by me.
All right, let's move on to pending business. First item under that is road work, 2013, 2014. Some good news there, we've talked about the shower road project, and we were going to apply for the local road improvement dollars, and we were approved for the $20,000 LRIP, which I think you remember was one of the contingencies we had if we were going to do that Shower Park to Cave Point section. So Linda was at the meeting, and in your packet here, you'll notice what each town submitted and what dollars they may have received, and of course, we received the full $20,000 that we'd asked for, which I thought was good news, so that makes that project a lot more viable.
Yep.
The second thing that's in your packet is a thanks but no thanks letter from the DOT. This goes back to the construction of the passing lane by the Lobenstein Grandma Tommies project. If you recall, we went and added that passing lane, and we paid for it, and Leo put in a request to see if by chance they had any extra dollars they were going to send us to reimburse us, and of course, it's a very nice lengthy letter, but basically it says thanks but no thanks, we told you we weren't going to, and we're still not going to. So, that's the extent of, extent of that.
Always pluck.
We left last month, the meeting schedule for 2014 is an open item. I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at that, if there's anything that needs to be modified. I have one change I'd like to make, I don't know about anyone else.
I like that they put draft and they put a date on there.
Special request of the clerk, so, Dick, anything from your end? I'll just go down through the board.
The meeting, the meeting schedule?
Correct.
Um, not really.
Okay.
Let's find me.
Other than the late time for the road inspection, I have no other problems with it. I think we could get out there by 7:30, 8 o'clock, so that we can get done by noon.
Yeah. Give us some time to get out of the van and look through it.
I'll leave that call up to the other chairman. How's that?
I think it's 6:30.
From my perspective, I need to move the January 7th, excuse me, the February 17th meeting back one week to the 24th, as it turns out, there'd be, none of the two chairmans would be here that day.
Oh, my gosh.
So, if anyone has a problem, we move that one.
We could put a TBA there.
Okay with Linda? In fact, I think it works out better for Linda, because you have an election to deal with beforehand, right?
Right, and then if we could take care of business in February, and maybe forego a March meeting.
Right. John, you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
So everything else works? Okay, Linda, you can take this and put a date on it and send it back out, if you would.
Any thoughts on the budget work session in October? We usually have that the first or second week in October, depending on everyone's schedule.
I think that that usually ends up being a conflict with John.
Mm-hmm. Any thoughts on that?
Well...
Supervisor Stavenas. There are calendars in front of you, 2013 calendars in front of you.
School board.
There you go. Your school board is usually what, the 3rd Thursday?
Second, 13th calendar.
So, perhaps, perhaps October 9th?
October 9th would be out.
Okay, good. About October 2nd?
We could probably do it, that's a Thursday. Why don't we shoot, put pencil in the second then?
Second of October.
It's, it's a little early in the month, because, you know, I'm trying to get an estimate for year-end or whatever, do we need to have it on a Thursday?
No.
Wednesday.
Is the whole week of October 6th out for you, John?
I would think so, yeah. We haven't got it scheduled yet, but that's usually when we go, is the week around the 7th, so.
And are you back on the week of the 13th?
Probably, probably like...
You want to just...
You want to do it on Thursday, the 16th, or is that too late?
Do you have school board?
School board is the 16th.
What about Tuesday, the 14th?
Tuesday, Tuesday.
October 14th.
Yep, that's good for me.
Do you think that'll work for you?
Let's try it.
Tuesday, October 14th? At 6:00, 6:30, 7?
6:00 seems fine, I think.
If we go through that whole work and somebody comes up and wants to add another $100,000, then it isn't worth adding, is it?
No, then we'd cancel, then we'd cancel the meeting.
It depends.
It depends on what?
If it's justifiable.
Well, I think you should have brought it up at the work session.
Okay. So we'll put that back out, Linda will publish it and put a date on it, so if we revise it later, you'll have the right one. Okay, Door County Coastal Byways kiosk cost grant reimbursement to date. Chuck, you want to take us through where we stand with that?
Well, the kiosk is done, the project is complete, all the bills are in now, as you can see, the ones listed here. The second line item, $300, and there's another $300 one down there at 412-2013, to Door County Economic Development Corporation.
Right.
Those are our annual dues to the Door County Coastal Byway, so they really don't have anything to do with the kiosk, but the way Linda put this together, this is the money that's been spent on coastal byways to date. So those two bills have been paid by the last two numbers, or last two lines, and are not included in that $28,062.02. But everything came in as planned, as put together, so the numbers are here, that's what we have invested to date, we did get 2/3 of the DOT grant dollars back, $10,356, we received that about two weeks ago, was it? So our outstanding yet is $11,981, of which our local grant for $5,000, as soon as we get all the paperwork together, and that will be coming in, and, and the contribution that the town had agreed to pay.
And other, and the balance of the 2/3, right?
That will be coming as soon as the plan is, the plan is all finished and gone over, which I would take a guess will probably be February of next year. We're in the process right now of going over the plan, proofing the draft, we'll have to go back and be finalized then, and printed, and sent out, so, once that part is complete, we can file the paperwork for the remainder of the draft.
And all of this money falls to us this year, because everything else was paid out last year and accounted for, I believe, right, Linda?
Actually, it was accrued into 2012, so it's just going into the general fund.
Well, if Tom Gurman would hear, he would applaud everything, Chuck, because, you know, we did this all for nothing. Anyway, it's good to see that the project turned out as well as it did, and that we're going to get back as much as we are, so that's good news.
Hopefully, in the future here, the near future, maybe the DOT, the scenic byways will have more grant dollars available. As it stands right now, there are no dollars out there, they weren't funded, so, once those funds return, we can start planning other projects, you know, even in our town here, we were talking about maybe doing something at the park with the bathrooms or the concession stand or that, that may be something that we could look at, using these grant dollars as a tool, apply toward a project like that, or doing something at the boat launches or the parks.
Did you see, I don't know, I can't recall if it was in the advocate or not, but I think it was, it was an editorial, or a letter to the editor, talking about trying to get Door County as part of the National Scenic Byway, something to that effect?
That is the next step in our process.
Okay, so you're...
Right now, we are the Door County, the State Scenic Byway Program, and once you clear those hurdles and get that under your belt, you can continue to apply and reach national status.
Which would be like the, what's in Kentucky runs across, yeah, another kiosk, runs across Kentucky Blue Ridge Parkway, things of that nature, I think, around the scenic, National Scenic Byway.
The trail, yeah.
Like Route 66?
I don't know if Route 66 is on it, but there are some things like that that are...
I don't think 66 is a national yet, they are, or maybe they are, because they do go through several states, so, it could be.
It was an interesting article, and I thought as long as we didn't have to build another kiosk, I was okay with it, so, anyway.
Well, someday we may want to do something, it may not be an elaborate thing as we have now, but you will have individual, they call them kiosks, but they're more like informational boards, a single board set up in a place, say, we went out to the Dunes Park or something, and set something there, just telling about the dunes, the plants, different things that are there, you know, so somebody can get some background information and then walk on out.
The dunes would have to be done by Jackson Park, because that's their park. At least according to their interpretive plan. It's a good thing, the good thing they didn't...
It's a joint effort, it doesn't, not claims one, I mean, everybody travels between...
We'll take the credit.
Okay, well, thank you much. We added to the agenda the other day, when we were working on it, the town hall well and water update. As you know, we've been testing constantly, after having had a series of water tests that came back that were not acceptable, and they run in streaks, and then the water's fine. At any rate, I asked Linda if she would do a little checking on where we're at with that, and so I'm going to ask her to just explain what's happening there.
Well, I'm pleased to report that we now have had seven samples in a row acceptable, absent any coliform or any other bad things, so that's great. We do have to do two more samples this week, we have to get them in this week, and then we'll be good to go until we start 2014 and back on our regular quarterly testing. I did talk to a well driller, I've talked to Culligan, and it's a little premature right now to even think about what we may have to do, because it all depends on what the DNR is going to order us to do. If, you know, if we can keep getting the clean samples after we chlorinate and all that, they may not ask us to do anything, that we just carry on as normal, but if we continuously have this, you know, poor sampling, that the people at Culligan, some, the DNR may order you to drill a new well, they may order you to just do the UV system, they may say do both, so, right now, it'd be impossible to determine what our costs may be, but still, would, should be in the back of our mind, or actually at the foremost, that if we, it seems fall, every fall, we've had, you know, the sampling with the rain and the runoff, that's the time of the year when those things happen, so.
What did we, I know that you called Culligan at my request to talk to them, and they told you that, you know, the DNR is basically going to drive that solution. What do we pay when we had Culligan water in here? Was it a big deal?
Um, no, it wasn't a big deal, but, you know, that means what? That I put signage at the sinks, don't use the water at the sinks, don't use the water in the bathroom, I, you know, I think we would eventually have, be in a public building, we'd eventually have to cure that problem.
But I, I think the options would be up to us, though, as long, as long as we can meet the safe water.
I don't know, according to Culligan, and of course, they have experience, because the Town of Vic Harbor went through the same situation.
Really?
I don't know if any other towns in, in Door County have had the problem, but, yeah, they set the criteria as to what, be in a public building, the DNR will set the criteria as to what you may or may not need to do.
And that, that fits with our earlier run-in, I mean, this is, what, four years? We're coming, we're going into five years in this building?
Right, this fall was, I believe, the fourth time that we were under, you know, the boil order.
But it happens in...
So, it happens in the fall, always in the fall, when there's...
Lots of water.
Lots of water.
Water is frozen.
You know, and you have to do that quarterly, so whether you do it at the beginning of the quarter or at the end of the quarter, you're going to catch rain somewhere along the point, along the line, so, so we'll just keep an eye on it and see how it goes.
All right, remind me to come over and help you do that again this week, so I don't forget.
How about tomorrow?
Get it out of the way.
Tomorrow?
May be possible. All right, let's move on to new business, we have a couple things in here. First one in your packet is the road certification. This is a requirement of the DOT, and it is how they pay us, or give us, the general transportation aids, which we use for road construction, maintenance, et cetera, and what we have to do is go through that and certify to them our actual mileage on the road, and it's a little bit of a change this year from prior years, I think, I don't know exactly how much we lost, but, what, a mile, maybe?
No, it was more like, I believe, a 4 tenths of a mile, there were some discrepancies on shore side, circle, and drive.
Oh, so it's actually less? I said a mile, you said 4 tenths of a mile.
4 tenths of a mile.
Okay.
Less than, yeah, we were at 85, and now we're at 84.95, or something like that.
So Linda has turned in that paperwork and given it to the Department of Transportation. The next item in there is pavement management and capital improvement plan. This is a requirement for when we submit a request for local road improvement project dollars, and we have to submit this, and when Linda went to the county with our application, they asked her if we had such a document, and so if you take a look at it, on the second page, it goes through a list of things that you should have in a management process, and if you go down the list, most of these items we have already, we have in place, establish a roadway inventory, town in private, we know what that is, we have those documented. Pavement rating system, we use the Whistler rating system, that's what we do when we go out on the road inspection in May, as well as any updates that occur throughout the year. The inspection process, we physically do that in May on the annual tour and make recommendations for changes, either at Whistler, or changes or recommendations for repair or reconstruction of the road, so we do that. Roadway condition summary, basically, it's the same thing, again, going right back to the two things that we do currently. On capital improvement planning, we identify projects, again, as part of the annual road tour. Financial plan, I guess you can basically call, that's our budgeting process, and how much money we have to spend from transportation aids, and what we decide to spend on an annual basis for roads. Funding sources, we know where that comes from. System maintenance is probably the only area that I don't know that we could probably define, other than that we put budget dollars aside to repair roads that perhaps pop up versus ones that we've identified up front as part of the road tour. What I had done, when I went through this with Linda, is I'd asked her to contact some of the other towns to see, because each one of the towns that put in a request for the LRIP said they had this. Now, I don't know whether they do or they don't, but it would be nice to see what they have, and by the way, the county has to have the same document, so, I don't know if you had any feedback from anyone, Linda, or not, on this?
I only, so far, I only received feedback from one town, and it was a very one-page sheet indicating, this is what we plan to do for 2013, and this is the estimated cost in 2014, 2015. Our current procedure is certainly adequate with the tour and the inspection and the spreadsheets and the costs and all that, but having been appointed to the Town Road Improvement Committee, I'm learning a lot, and there are some terms that we can put into our planning, such as safety, longevity, traffic counts, and things like that, that will give us a better chance or a higher rating when it comes to the Town Road Improvement Funds and who is awarded what. This year, Door County was awa, or for 2014, Door County was awarded $107,000 or whatever, and it's, what the town, what the qualifying towns receive is based on a rating system with those items, safety, longevity, cost, traffic count, things like that. So I think, you know, just refine our presentation as everything, so...
Does this money, is it very similar, I mean, here on the committee, I mean, we get same roughly right money allocated to the county every year, or is there huge swings in this?
Um, there's not huge swings, I believe it was a little less last year. John Cologie, the Highway Commissioner, gives us a summary, this is what we've received in the last, you know, five years, and this is what the various towns have received. Some towns do not apply, some towns apply all the time, and of course, they get a higher percentage, so, but it's a very fair rating system, I have to say that. When we went through it on the committee, it was very fair.
Well, if we come up with something meaningful from the other communities that we could make part of ours, then we should probably bring this back and just try and see if we can incorporate those thoughts into the process in anticipation of the future needs.
And also, part of our, the Clerk Treasurer Policies and Procedure Manual that I've been working on for the last two years, I mean, this is a good tool for anybody coming, the next Clerk Treasurer coming in too, so, that she would know the process and things like that.
How big is that binder right now?
There's room for more.
Maybe future job opportunities here.
Is this just part of the TRI program that we, we apply for special funding for...
LRIP.
LRIP.
Local Road Improvement Program.
Local Road Improvement or Town Road Improvement, some call it... Local Road Improvement or Town Road Improvement, some call it TRIP, some call it LRIP.
Okay.
It's not part, it's not part of our state allocated for...
No, not for general transportation aids, but when you complete an LRIP or a TRIP application, it does ask you, do you have an improvement plan in place for this project? And of course, for Shower Road, we have our resolutions, we have our, you know, our spreadsheets, we have the tour, we have the Whistler rating, which that road was rated, you know, just at three, so, so we're certainly adequate, but like I said, we can refine it a little bit.
So it was only a hundred thousand dollars that the whole county got last year?
That is, that is what the county will get for 2014, one hundred and seven.
So it's not really a significant...
We've applied for it.
I think three, I think we were, we've been awarded three or four times in the last fifteen years.
But it has nothing to do with what we're allowed to levy for, for road construction or repair?
No, not at all.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right, on the...
You're welcome.
Next item on the button, on the agenda is the extension of the independent contractor agreement and videographer's agreement, and I'll let Dick talk to that.
Uh, this being my first year on, on the committee for the Public Access Channel, reading through it, I find, you know, I, I don't have any considerations regarding a contract. I'm assuming it's very similar to last year's contract as an independent contractor, and if nobody has any concerns, I would recommend that we, that we sign it and enter an agreement with Laddie Chapman for another year as our videographer.
Since you are the chairman of said committee, you have the authority to do that, so we will not, we do not need a motion to, to make that happen if, we don't, we don't know if Laddie agrees.
I think I will.
Have you read the contract, Laddie?
I do, it was the last year.
Okay. I assume, I assume, other than the slight increase in the per month, seventeen dollars.
All right.
I'm gonna go ahead and sign it as chairman of the Peg Channel Committee.
Okay, and then give that back to Linda, and I'm sure that our videographer would like a copy as well, so.
Sign it, too.
All right, there you go. All right. Next item is Door County Comprehensive Plan and Current Land Use Maps Status. Ooh, that's a lot, John.
Well...
Pressure.
Comprehensive plan for the Door County, like I said before, we just got the information back, so I won't go over that anymore, we're gonna get to that in January. The other part of it is the existing current land use maps. The county is updating them, they were, they were done approximately 2007 before, and they want us to go as the comprehensive plan and then recommend to the town board, go over them and see if there's some differences and see what exactly is business, commercial, and all that stuff, so we will have to do that on the meeting in January, too, so...
Do you have, on a similar subject, I guess, do you have any feedback from the county relative to the meeting and hearing that we had here on changing land uses in the town?
Yes, we just got that tonight.
So you got that as well?
That's, that's gonna come up in January, yes.
Okay, and...
Because we didn't get it for, what was it, the December eleventh meeting, so...
Oh, that was the one, I'm sorry, that's what you were referring to, okay.
Right. Yeah, we were supposed to have a meeting until December eleventh, but when we last talked to Mariah, she said it might not be done by December, so...
But they, they should have all the updates, I mean, all the requests to change classification or use that have gone through us.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should have them.
It says here...
I guess it's just a check to look at ours and see what we have and what they have and compare the two.
Yeah, it's kind of a strange statement they make here. Remember, this is a current land use map, it has nothing to do with how property is currently zoned, nor how the property may be zoned or used in the future.
Right.
That's why I was wondering how that overlays with what we think we might try to do or not do, and what impact it has. It almost seems like...
Well, they're updating their maps for their new comprehensive plan, so, yeah, it's...
I don't know how to make a statement like that, but I, I think one, one consideration is that our comprehensive smart, uh, smart growth plan, I don't know, I mean, I think we have to sometime re-present this, I mean, because part of this rezoning exercise that we're, we're doing coincides with our, our comprehensive plan or our smart growth plan that we did and approved how many years ago, and I, maybe the public or residents are not clear on that.
Well, there's a list of stuff that we don't in the comprehensive plan, too, so...
Yeah.
Well, there are people that have, that I have talked to since this whole thing started that have come forward and said, oh, by the way, do you remember, or were you in attendance when we did the original comprehensive plan, and I think it was nineteen ninety-five, and I was at that meeting.
Was it ninety-five?
I think it was, I think it was ninety-five.
Really?
It was held in the multipurpose room and, and...
Was it that long ago?
I think it was ninety-five, I could be wrong, but I was at that meeting, and it was a lot of discussion about...
It was in the nineties, but I thought it was later than that, but...
Maybe it was later. Well, well, county zoning went in, I think, on ninety-five, maybe that was it, and we were a couple of years after that, but, but, anyway, there are people that know it, I mean, you could go back, if you were gonna do that, you'd have to almost go back to that first one and say, okay, here's, here's the output of that first comprehensive plan, and here's the second one, and how much of a variance is there?
Well, when we went through the comprehensive plan for that year and a half, we did go back and revisited the first one, and looked that all over, and then adjusted off from that one, and this is what we came up with, so, you know, it's an ongoing thing that you're gonna have to update all the time, so...
Update, right, yeah. Change?
Change, or whatever, so, yes, I, we'll just have to get back to you on this one from the county, too.
Then there's this other one in here, Public Education Discussion Meeting on Planning and Zoning Issues for Local Board and Plan Commission Members, is somebody from your group going to that?
As far as I know, yes.
January thirtieth?
January thirtieth.
Free coffee and donuts, I think, excessive?
Victoria's always so wonderful to go there and take care of all that.
Darren Lambert.
And Daryl, yes.
Daryl, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, you want this copy?
You got a copy?
I think I've already sent it to the Plan Commission, I think they all have it.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Resolution Number Seven Twenty Thirteen TB, which is the Appointment of Election Officials. I think this came up at last month's meeting, where the two parties in question provide Linda a list of people that would work for us during the elections, and I think in this case, you actually only got a list from the Republicans, is that correct, Linda?
That is correct.
And they also told us in what order they would like these people called, so I don't know if that means they don't vote Republican towards the end of the month, or, I don't know, whatever, but she has this attachment on the resolution, and we need a motion to approve that.
I'll move that we approve Resolution Number Zero Seven Twenty Thirteen TB, Appointment of Election Officials.
I'll second.
Motion by Chuck, and second by John, for approval of Resolution Number Seven Twenty Thirteen TB. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion's carried.
Got one question, one minute.
Sure.
Did the Democrats put out a list, or...
Um, they have put out lists in the past, but for some reason, I did not receive a list from the Democratic Chairman this year. I have contacted some of the Democratic workers and asked if they would like to be put on this unaffiliated list. I know there are quite a few names on here, but I did contact each and every one of them. They have offered to serve, and you never know with vacations and weather and things like that, so we've got a healthy list of election officials to call up.
Okay. Yeah. Next is the Approval of Vouchers, Bills, and Claims, November nineteenth, twenty thirteen through December sixteenth. Has everybody had a chance to look at them and sign in the appropriate place? They have, okay. In which case, I would need a motion to approve.
I'll approve that motion.
All right.
Second?
Motion by John, second by Dick, for the Approval of the Vouchers, Bills, Claims, November nineteenth, twenty thirteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last things, few things here, our correspondence. First one in the list here is the City of Sturgeon Bay, which I think actually earned their money this last month with the number of calls that they had, and a couple callbacks on a particular fire out in our neck of the woods, so you can see they were pretty busy this time, at least running out, doing different things for us.
We're gonna start seeing ice rescues real soon.
Yeah, I mean, given how many, they just rescued somebody, I saw on the news yesterday from Lake Winnebago on a snowmobile, and I was like, I would not, I would not be out there.
Hopefully not.
It would be all right.
First responders, you know, they have to be there.
Yeah, we shoot that, we do that with binoculars.
Then there's the Public Hearing before the Board of Adjustment that took place on December tenth, that was for the Hurley residents, and...
It was approved?
It was approved. And then there's what, the next one here was a variance request for the Johnsons, and I believe that was approved as well.
The Johnsons was?
Was approved. The next sheet is the Statement of Equalized, Statement of Assessment for Twenty Thirteen, and on your note, if you, maybe, mine is highlighted, so I don't know if yours is, but down on the bottom, no.
They gave a second question?
Down on the bottom, it says, aggregate assessed value of all property subject to general property tax was seven hundred and fourteen million, five hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars, and the equalized value was seven hundred and fourteen, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred bucks, which is almost identical. And the thing that's interesting here is that we have to always plan for a reassessment, and typically, we don't have to do a reassessment until we get out of sync by ten percent, and then, even if it's out of sync at ten percent, the town has a year or two in which to actually start the reassessment before the state mandates and comes in and says, we'll do it if you don't. Well, with these equalized values being so close, it basically says, we're almost right on the money, so the chances of us having, having a reassessment are pretty slim in the near future, based on this.
Dan, this one back here for the Board of Adjustments was denied because of the size of the building. Jonathan Hurley.
I thought it was granted.
Johnsons were granted.
Well, it's based on use.
Okay.
Use value.
There's two of them, yeah.
Yep.
I think for that, that assessment statement, too, that gives a lot of credit to our assessors, Associated Appraisals, that they're really in line, you know, with equalized, with it being that close, so...
Well, it came in at, what, ninety-nine, nine, seven, seven, four, five, nine, nine, so I mean, it's pretty close to, to almost a dead nut overlay, which means, you know, we've accumulated, I don't know, how much do we have on reserve already for a reappraisal?
Fifty-seven thousand, I believe.
We put like ten...
Ten grand a year.
In each year, so, I mean, that's good news, that they're in balance and we don't have to spend that money any sooner than necessary. Then on the next is the Distribution of Shared Revenues. This is additional revenue that comes from, comes to us, and this is notification of the final payment of twenty thirteen. We received a check for forty thousand, fifty-eight dollars and four cents.
Did you see the two of them?
Pardon me?
Did you see the two of them?
Yes.
Okay.
The next one is the Door County Civility Project. Did everybody have a chance to read this thing?
Yes.
Anybody have some comments before I make any of my own?
I wanna be civil, and I wanna agree with it.
Yeah. I, I read this thing, and I'm personally thinking, what in the world is this, and why do we need this, and why is it that we're supposed to put a resolution in place saying that we need to do this? I think we already do it, and...
Because you have to be nice.
Certain...
Be nice to the nice, you know, or whatever.
Certain, certain towns have had problems with civility.
Then they should deal with this, because I don't think it's something that...
Is this a countywide...
Yeah, it's a countywide project, and...
We set a good example for the rest of the towns.
I think what we could do then is, Laddie, would you make copies of all our town meetings and forward them to the other towns, so they can look and see what a civil meeting is like? Thank you, that'd be great. I, I just was surprised by the whole thing, and I'll tell you what really got me, was the same time that I was reading this in the packet, you'll notice a note there from Tom Girman, and we had taken Tom and his wife out to dinner, thanking them for their ten years, his ten years of service on the town board, and I'll just read you the first paragraph, because I think it was worthwhile, it says, Jerry and I thank you, Leo, Dan, John, and Chuck for hosting a great dinner last Thursday. I am humbled by the recognition for my time on the board and have a plaque hanging next to my computer as a daily reminder of serving on the board. Over the last ten years, we have had the usual differences of opinion, but have always found common ground in resolving issues in a respectful manner. I think that talks to the civility project as well as anything, so from my perspective, it doesn't need to go any further, but if somebody feels it does, please bring it back.
I would, I would certainly move to, to approve the resolution, half of the Thomas Sebastopol.
It's not an action item, it's correspondence, you need to bring it back.
We can bring it back.
We can't be named, um, you gotta actually put Sebastopol in there.
Pardon?
I said, we can't be named, um, in parentheses there.
Okay, so we're gonna be having it at another meeting?
I don't know if we should do anything with it, Dick.
You have to write a resolution.
Well...
This is, this is just a guideline for a resolution.
Right.
It's not mandatory.
Right.
And other towns...
I think it's unnecessary. It's almost making the statement that we're doing something wrong and need to correct what we're doing.
I'll, I'll be agreeable with that.
Okay, that's, that's a very good decision, thank you. And you were very civil about it.
I was.
And the, I think the final thing in your packet is a copy of the Go and Drive Newsletter that they sent us for informational purposes, and, oh, I'm sorry, and a notice that they sent some coffee from the people that financed their building, so feel free to stop back and have a cup.
I have one comment.
Sure.
How did he get hit and struck by a tree while walking down Glidden Drive?
Oh, you're talking about...
It fell.
It fell on him.
Fell on him. He's very lucky.
He actually called the hospital. He got hurt. He was walking down the street in one of those rotten poples, I think it was, poplar birch, popped down and banged it, so...
How unlucky is that?
Well, there was a fellow up in Bailey's Harbor, I can't think of his name anymore, but he, he was, got killed by a tree.
He was cutting trees.
Yeah, a dead, something fell on him.
Cedar tree, yeah.
Anyway.
There are numerous dead trees and broken limbs hanging over the highways lately. I brought that to Leo's attention to take back to the county, which he did with a letter to John Cologie to consider taking care of some of those things in their spare time.
What is the, what is the county right, right-of-way on a road, you know?
On a county road?
Yeah.
You know, if ours is thirty-three, that would probably fifty or sixty, I don't know.
Thirty-three on a town or...
Thirty-three on a town road.
So it must be sixty.
I was wondering.
The county roads were, were bigger, I thought they were up to sixty-five.
Yeah, I think so, I think you're right, sixty-five. I mean, there, I agree with you, there's a couple of trees, there's one on, between the hitching post and Glidden Lodge that is leaning at about a forty-five degree angle, and it just keeps coming further and further, that they, they don't seem to have any interest in doing, and it's definitely in their right-of-way.
Everybody tries to pass the buck, they're hoping that the utilities or the telephone companies will come and take care of it, because it's leaning on the wires or threatening the wires.
Our wires can hold a lot.
If we, if we do that, then John wouldn't have a job, so...
Okay. Announcements, we're fast approaching Christmas and Christmas Eve, and our office will be closed at noon on December twenty-fourth and closed all day on Christmas Day, that's probably not too shocking. Same thing will happen on New Year's Eve, on December thirty-first and January first. And our next meeting for the Board... And our next meeting for the Board of Supervisors would be Monday, January twentieth at seven PM in this wonderful building. And does anybody have any agenda items for next month that we need to include? And if not tonight, you can let me know.
One more item to speak on here.
You have something else you would like to add?
Door County Coastal Byways is putting together their new brochure. This will be the back page, it's a full tail map of the byway system.
How much is this going to cost?
Each red star indicates where the kiosk will be located. On the front, it's going to be a threefold. So the picture chosen was the highway going to the ferry dock up north, curving highway, a picture of it in the fall, the colors leaves and that. And then when you open it up, you're going to have directions, some, each of the towns involved has their little blog in there along with a little picture of something attractive. Sebastopol has a picture of the farm, little child sticking his hand in the, like a buffalo's mouth.
Who submitted that picture? Yeah, the kid looks like he's going to get his arm chopped off. I can see them people just rushing to the farm in order to see if their kid can lose their hands.
But if you notice on the, on the map page, Sebastopol Kiosk made the picture.
Yeah, I thought that was, that came over.
That's ours.
You know, I thought about that kiosk.
And I've got the draft of the master plan and our kiosk is featured in there several different times by picture.
We got White Fish doing State Park Pat too.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, it says it in the, right here.
I, I think that kiosk looks terrific, I actually thought about, wondering if we should do something with the benches because over the winter they're going to get weathered up pretty bad, but I mean, it looks great, so hopefully it draws twenty thousand people a year or maybe two.
They aren't going anyplace.
No, I know that. Hopefully, I know, there's, which is good, so. And they're far enough away from the road that no one should come in into it, so. Oh, it looks kind of neat, and they're going to have these in like all of the typical tourist spots?
Yes.
The rack carts and the rack carts, yeah.
All the rack carts, yeah. Well, it looks pretty nice. Anything else? If not, there would be a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Chuck to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.